7:01. Um, we're gonna do Jana Lynn Dela Cruz. Um, the vice chair is gonna be doing the reading of the rules of speaking. Um, sorry, just for the, the record from the beginning, I want to make sure that, um, I'm the vice chair and Jana's the second vice chair. Um, I'm gonna be chairing the meeting today. Um, we do not have quorum at the moment, so we have five. And quorum for, six is required for quorum, so just to let everybody know. If we do have a six, I'll let you guys know, but for the moment, we just have five. Okay, Jana Lynn.
Okay. Aloha, this is your community public forum. Your input and cooperation are really appreciated. The Eva Neighborhood Board is an advisory board, and we provide fairness, integrity, and collaboration to all to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to raise their hand, and when recognized by the chair, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under one minute, one turn per person. Those giving reports are urged to keep the reports less than three minutes and presentations under ten minutes. Please silence all electronic devices. For those who are, uh, joining us through the video teleconference, the board will be making a good uh, faith effort to provide the public with the opportunity to observe the meeting as it happens, and an opportunity to provide oral testimony without a physical presence in the physical meeting room. Please ensure that your computer or phone is muted unless you are speaking. And just to note, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law, HRS 92. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, eight of this eleven-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people.
Okay, thank you, Jana. The next item of business is 1B, which is introduction of board members. I'm gonna start with the board members here on this table before we go online. I'm Vice Chair Julie Reyes-Orada, and we're just gonna go down the table.
Mitchell Tainanes.
Vice Chair Jana Dela Cruz.
Mike Plowman.
And online.
Susan Garman Chang.
Okay, thank you, guys. So again, we still have five people at the moment. Um, the next part is public safety, first responder reports. Um, board member Mitchell Tainanes is gonna be keeping, uh, time tonight. So if we could have a reminder that there's a limit to three minutes for each report. Follow-up questions and answers are gonna be limited to one turn. I'm gonna take follow-up questions and comments first from the board and then from the public. And then that's the order that we're gonna go in. So first of the Honolulu Fire Department, you guys are up. Thanks, thank you.
Evening, everybody. I'm firefighter, uh, Bill and Wabo, the Honolulu Fire Department Station, uh, of Beach Fire Station. I'm gonna go over the stats for the month of August. For fires, we had, um, two structures, nine wildland and brush fires, uh, four, um, nuisance fires, uh, one cooking fire, seven activated alarms. Um, other emergencies, a hundred sixty medicals, um, three motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, ten motor vehicle crashes with, uh, collisions. And we also did have one ocean rescue. Uh, this month's fire safety tip is the move over for emergency vehicle. Um, drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move-over law to help first responders while performing their duties near the roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it's a law. Um, some of the tips, uh, when we're working on the side, the emergency services are working on the side is slow down to reasonable prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of the emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall come to a complete stop before making a lane change under a paragraph. And make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary. And if, if safe to do so, uh, two lanes over, which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. So some of the entities include police, fire, uh, EMS, ocean safety, freeway, service patrol, tow trucks, and even some state and county vehicles. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can I take questions from the board in person first? Any questions or comments?
I, I got a question real quick. Um, besides the red cross, does the fire department, uh, either certify or teach CPR or first aid?
Uh, if you have any questions, um, you can email the HFD Public Affairs and, uh, media liaison at hfdnb@honolulu.gov. Thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry, not yet, not done yet. I'm gonna just take any questions first. Did, any question, sorry, on the board, you guys are good? Okay, um, Susan, online, nothing? Okay, any questions or comments from the public in person? If you guys can state your name first and then, um, you can make your comment or question. Thank you.
My name is David Aki, I'm a resident of Ever Beach. It's regarding something I read on the news about you guys' safety in uniforms, regarding, regarding causing cancer or something. Is that true?
Uh.
Do you know anything about that?
Say again, sir.
Guys who do what you guys material in your uniforms? Causing you guys to get sick? You heard anything about that?
I don't wanna give you the wrong answer.
No, no, no.
If you have any questions, you can, uh, I have a...
Well, you personally, you, you wear the uniform, you do say?
Yes.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Okay. Um, sorry. Okay, anybody online? No, okay, um, Fire Department, thank you for coming. Thanks. Up next is gonna be the Honolulu Police Department, and I believe Corporal Pagan is online.
Good evening, Vice Madam Chair, Honorable Person, Board Members, members of the community, Corporal Pagan with the Honolulu Police Department District, Community PC. I did have your stats for August. Uh, in August, we had thirty-two motor vehicle thefts, seven in our area, seventeen burglaries, five in our area, a hundred thirty thefts, twenty-five in our area, forty-two unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, sixteen in our area. Uh, there's a total of six thousand nine hundred thirty-five calls for service, uh, one thousand eight hundred thirty-five in our area. Um, I think that's all I have. Uh, oh. Um, next week, Friday, uh, the Honolulu Police Department is holding, uh, career, um, type of fair at the Kamakana Lee, uh, I believe it's from four to eight PM. Um, we are inviting everyone to come down and get some information um, about the great job that we have and how they could have one of those same great jobs. Um, can talk to different divisions and stuff like that, get some information, ask their questions and stuff like that. Um, I believe Saturday also will be in, uh, Kapale, uh, the whole Pele area. We're gonna be doing KID, they're gonna be doing, uh, uh, safety awareness type of fair block party down there uh, from nine to three, I believe. Uh, other than that, I won't be telling any comments, questions, or concerns.
Okay, thank you, Corporal Pagan. Can I have any, do you guys have any questions or comments from the board, uh, in person?
Hi Corporal Pagan, uh, Mike Plowman. Um, one of our neighbors contacted me recently regarding the dog attack on the Leeward Bike Path. And, um, I'm not sure if that's actually in our district or, or the next one over, but apparently on the Leeward Bike Path, the person was riding their bike. Uh, a dog or a pack of dogs, I guess, attacked this person, injured them, made the news. Um, I'm wondering if you know if those dogs have been, uh, if there's, what the status on those dogs might be. And, um, another point of concern for me was that it seemed kinda like that, that there's actually no personnel uh, assigned to HPD who are actually uh, animal control folks, that it sounds like you guys contact, uh, uh, the Hawaiian Humane Society to help you out with that. Is, is that accurate? And, and yeah, do you know what the status of those wild, or those aggressive dogs might be?
Um, my, it was my understanding, I, I believe it was also on the news that, um, Humane Society did go back out there, they did remove some of the dogs. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I think the owner was cited, I'm not sure about that, but that did actually happen. Although the path, you can get to the path from the West Lock in the Eva area. I believe this incident happened, uh, on the Waipahu side, um, of the path, further down the path. Um, in regards to, um, HPD having dog catcher personnel, um, if you ask the public, we are all dog catcher personnel. Um, but we are not supposed to be, we're not trained for that, we don't have the equipment for it. Um, we do defer to Humane, the Hawaii Humane Society, however, uh, part of their requirements when people call for a dangerous dog, um, or loose dogs is, um, they're wanting us to actually secure the dogs. So officers have to go out there and actually try to secure the dogs if at all possible before the Humane Society will come and pick them up. Um, again, some of the issues that we're working on with the Humane Society is, uh, there's space for the dogs that we're dealing with. Um, oftentimes, they won't take the dogs because they don't, they don't have space, or, um, when they come out and someone claims a dog, uh, they'll give the dog back to the person unless there was actually a report made that someone was actually attacked or the dog attacked another animal or something. Um, you know, a lot of times, people will call and call friends, and then they call us. Um, but if there's no report made then, uh, by the victim, then the Humane Society won't take the animals, and HPD can't do anything without the victim being there to make a report.
Okay, thanks for that.
Okay, any questions or comments from the public in person? Nope, online? Nope, okay, thank you Corporal Pagan.
Thank you very much.
Corporal Pagan, are you also gonna be doing the Weed and Seed?
Yes.
Okay, then this is up for you, the next is the Eva Weed and Seed Unit, thank you.
Um, hello again. Um, we, for Weed and Seed, we don't have too much to, um, talk about at the moment, except for that we do have our Legacy Luncheon in October. Um, on October twenty-sixth, it's gonna be at the Okia Island Center. Um, anybody that's interested in attending, um, they can go to Weed and Seed Hawaii, uh, website, or they can, uh, email me and I can get them to the right people. Um, I don't know if I should give you my email here, or... Um, but yeah, I mean, if, if we do have it, uh, anybody interested, call, uh, email me, rpagan@honolulu.gov. Um, and we can go ahead and get them the information, the tickets that they're gonna need for the Legacy Luncheon. Um, other than that, that's all I have for the moment for Weed and Seed.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Corporal Pagan, real quick. The Legacy Luncheon, can you kinda, uh, describe what is it used for, for Weed and Seed, and why do they have it?
Sure. The Legacy Luncheon is, uh, a luncheon that's, uh, put on, it's also a fundraiser for Weed and Seed so that we can continue to make money to do our programs within the community for our youth and our kapuna. Um, it's also an opportunity for us to recognize, uh, people that have worked with Weed and Seed and the community, um, and recognize their efforts and their work that they've done, uh, to better Weed and Seed communities, which does not only include Ever Beach, but also Waipahu and Chinatown and Kalihii area. Um, it is a big thing, uh, Weed and Seed is a nonprofit. Um, we do depend on, uh, grants as well as donations to keep the program running. Um, and keep the staff employed and stuff like that, so it is a great program. Um, you know, with, with, yeah, just to give you guys a little bit of information, with, with the Weed and Seed program, where, where we work with a lot of different agencies and people in the community. Um, one of those, just for an example, is we found out information about a possible game room being set up in, um, uh, the Banana Camp area on Renton Road. Uh, we got that information, um, uh, Senator Favela went down there and, uh, uh, if you guys didn't see his Facebook video, take a look at it. Um, it kinda put the people on blast, and if I'm not mistaken, we're in the process of shutting them down before they would finish building their illegal structure, and we are working with the property owner to see about what we can do, uh, to, uh, deal with the people that are trying to open up the business over there. So those are the kinda things that Weed and Seed does, uh, the partnership with, uh, the Honolulu Police Department as well as the Prosecutor's Office and all of our community members. So it is a great program. Uh, great opportunity for people to get involved, uh, again, so please help support us and, uh, we'll keep, try to keep our community safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions or comments from the, from the public? Okay, thank you Corporal Pagan.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're gonna move on to Section Three, which is Board Administration and Planning. I wanna make sure I give a reminder that we still only have five, which means we don't have quorum. So when I, um, move through some of these, you're gonna might hear me say defer, and the reason we defer is we can't, because we can't vote on it. So remember, we need six. The first thing is gonna be 3A, which is the approval of regular meeting minutes for Thursday, July eleventh. I'm gonna defer that because we can't vote on that tonight. Okay. And then for 3B, it's filling a vacancy for one at-large seat. That also requires a quorum vote, which means we can't take that up today too, so we're gonna have to defer that. For moving on to 3C, which is the draft resolution on good government reforms. We do have Jana Lynn and a guest who's gonna be presenting it. So just to let everybody know, because we don't have quorum, we're gonna have the presentation, we're gonna have discussions, questions, if you guys need. Um, if anybody has any, but we, the board itself cannot take any more, um, any action on this item. So that's what's gonna happen, that's why you're not gonna see a vote afterwards. So for Section 3C, I'm gonna pass it to Jana Lynn Dela Cruz.
Hi, everyone. Um, I just wanted to check if Maria was online, 'cause the person who, um, reached out, okay, perfect. Yeah, just as Julie, uh, Chair Julie has mentioned, we're just, we're not gonna vote on it, but just for transparency sakes, um, I just wanted to introduce this draft resolution regarding, um, good government reform. Um, and this was, or I was approached by Maria, and she'll be giving a little more context about the resolution. Um, so Maria, did you wanna take it away first, or did you want me to read the resolution first before you get into what it's about?
Yeah, I can, I can kind of talk about it first, but thank you so much, Jana, and thank you Chair Julie and members of the board for allowing me to discuss this resolution. Um, again, my name is Maria Raluhai. I am a part of a coalition of organizations for good governance led by common cause and the Clean Elections coalitions and other organizations. So, um, just to briefly talk about the resolution, I'll talk about what it does, our goals for the, the resolution, but I'm also free for any questions you may have or just any clarifications. But, um, basically, this resolution, uh, calls on the Hawaii State Legislature to adopt some critical good governance reforms that were recommended by the Commission to Improve Standards of Con, of Conduct. I think the acronym is CISC in 2022. Um, basically, the resolution is split up in, uh, I would say, three sections. The first is five amendments to the House and Senate rules before the 2025 sessions. And basically, to sum up the five, um, amendments, it's, um, one is committees must immediately release all testimony for public review. Committees must vote on the disposition of all referred bills to that committee. Um, this doesn't mean voting on every single bill that gets referred, but individually, um, but it could also be in slates. Um, non-fiscal, non-fiscal bills can't be sent to finance committees if it doesn't have to do anything with money. Um, all bills must be circulated for co-sponsorship, so a hearing scheduled for, uh, bills with, with major support from House and Senate. Um, amendments must be written in form before voting as well. Um, and then the second section is statutory amendments in the 2025 session. So one of them is banning campaign contributions from state contractors, grantees, leases, and associates and their, and their family members. Um, enact a comprehensive public financing option for candidates, and basically prohibit laundering contributions to other campaigns. And the last section is a constitutional amendment on the ballot to give constituents, the people, um, a say on whether to have term limits for state legislators. So, yeah, these reforms are really important if we wanna have transparency, accountability, and public trust back in the legislative process, and that is our goal for this resolution. Um, these reforms really will make the legislative process and the legislative session and just the legislative body as a whole more responsive to the people's needs and concerns. Um, so, yeah, that's kind of what the summary of the resolution is. Um, I believe these are really good reforms, um, and I ask the board, um, for support in considering this resolution for the next meeting. Thank you. And available for questions as well.
Thank you, Maria. I think we'll take questions like during the public comment section if there are any, but um, just for this part of the agenda, I'm just gonna read it out loud. Electronics copies of this resolution has been transmitted to the board, but formal decision-making will take place. But for all you folks online and in person, I'm just gonna read it, um, right now, um, really quick. So this is a resolution urging the state legislature to adopt good government reforms, whereas the Eva Neighborhood Board is the elected body of community residents representing over seventy thousand of the neighborhood residents. And whereas the Eva Neighborhood Board is a citizens advisory board whose purpose is to increase and assure effective citizen participation in the decisions of government. And whereas in regular session of 2022, the Hawaii State Legislature convened the Commission to Improve Standards of Conduct, or CISC, for the purpose of reforming basic underpinnings of our state governance, specifically the laws surrounding corruption, lobbying, ethics, and campaign spending. And whereas at the direction of House Resolution Nine, the Commission convened regularly for over nine months in 2022, we set, with the essential goal to provide recommendations that would help restore public trust in government and increase the level of transparency in its operations and accountability of individuals by recommending clear standards of conduct and enforcement of the law, and submitted its final report to the House of Representatives on December first, 2022. And whereas the Commission in its final report identified potential solutions to deter and prevent acts such as those that catalyze the creation of the Commission, offering thirty-one legislative proposals intended to strengthen laws relating to fraud, corruption, criminal investigations, campaign spending, and contributions, elections, ethics, openness of government operations, and transparency in the operations of each legislative chamber. And whereas throughout the duration of legislative sessions that followed the Commission's issuance of its final report, proposals with significant impact were introduced. Yet legislators failed to act on such proposals, including increasing safeguards on campaign contributions, prohibiting unilateral power to kill bills, allowing public immediate viewing of testimony, improving public financing of elections, and allowing the public to vote on term limits for legislators. And whereas bills that do not create or expend funds, non-fiscal bills, are often needlessly referred to the House and Senate Finance Committees, creating an insurmountable backlog of bills in those committees. And therefore be a resolve that Eva Neighborhood Board encourages public participation and civic engagement of the community, and therefore supports legislative efforts that proficiently allows constituents to meaningfully advocate on legislative priorities and remain informed about legislative decisions affecting their lives. And be it further resolved that the board supports a more transparent, accountable, and equitable legislative process, and gathers that critical government reform can be initiated through specific amendments to the House Senate Rule, House and Senate Rules, and statutory, statutory changes. And be a further resolve that the Eva Neighborhood Board respectfully urges the state legislature to pass the following five amendments to the House and Senate Rules before the 2025 legislative session. So I'll just go through the five. Each committee shall make all testimony received immediately available for public review at least twenty-two hours before the hearing and at least two hours before hearing or late testimony. Each committee shall vote on the disposition of all bills referred to the committee. Bills that do not create or expend funds, non-fiscal bills, shall not be referred to finance committees. Any bills that, that shall be circulated for co-sponsorship to all legislators in their respective chamber, and any House bill with at least twenty-five co-introducers, and any Senate bill with at least twelve co-introducers shall be scheduled for at least one hearing. And the fifth, amendments to the bills must be in written form in the possession of legislators before the amended version of the bill can be voted on. And be a further resolve, this is the second part, the Eva Neighborhood Board respectfully urges the legislature to pass the following three statutory amendments during the upcoming 2025 legislative session. One, prohibit campaign contributions from state contractors, grantees, lessees, and their owners, board members, staff, consultants, uh, sorry, consultants and those persons' immediate family members. Two, enact a viable comprehensive public financing option for candidates. Oh, I think this is three. Three, prohibit laundering campaign contributions through other candidate campaigns. And be a further resolve that the Eva Neighborhood Board respectfully urges the legislature to pass a bill during the upcoming 2025 legislative session. That would have, that would put a constit, constitutional amendment question on the ballot to allow the electorate to vote on term limits for state legislatures. And will be a further resolve, Eva Neighborhood Board respectfully urges the Hawaii State Legislature to act on all legislation and improvements relating to transparency, accountability, and equitability of the legislative process. And finally, be a finally resolve that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the governor, members of the 2025 Hawaii State Legislature, and all neighborhood boards. Okay, I think that's all.
Okay, thank you. So can I have any questions or comments from the board? I know it was a lot. So if you wanna take a moment, that's fine.
Maria, thank you. She's not, okay, anyway, uh, my question is, is this a, uh, fantastic work, by the way? And I've, I've been frustrated by a couple of these things, especially finance, the, where all bills go to die. Um, is this, uh, being, uh, presented to all neighborhood boards or more than just ours? Or is this a grassroots effort on the en- entire state level, or are, are, is this an Eva Neighborhood Board thing?
Um, yes, so we have a team that is working on getting the resolution introduced and hopefully passed out of all of the neighborhood boards. So I believe last week, Eva, our downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, and I believe Makali, um, introduced it. But it was also, um, and I think there's also Kai Moki that will, um, introduce it as well for their next meeting. But there, but just to summarize, yes, um, there are other neighborhood boards that, um, are putting this on their agenda and, um, having the discussion of supporting it.
Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you.
Anything for Susan? I'm probably gonna ask, but I'll let Susan go first. Okay. Hey Maria, I'm not asking you a question, I just wanted to make sure that for the record, uh, maybe you explain a couple of parts in here just for people who don't understand. So could you explain why you guys put, you put in that section the, um, number three, page two, be it further resolved, the second one, number three, that non-fiscal bills shall not be referred to finance committee? Can you just explain to us why, and then what that means and what the implications are for, for making an adjustment that way?
Yeah, of course. So, um, as a legislative advocate, I feel like this is something that we all kind of, you know, um, go through, especially when we are trying to introduce a bill. So the reason that we are asking, um, you know, non-fiscal bills or bills that doesn't necessarily require money to be appropriated to those bills not be referred, um, to the money committees like Ways and Means and, and Finance, is because, you know, the money committees are already, they receive a lot of backlog with the amount of bills, um, that require appropriation. So really good policies that don't even need to have money involved. Um, it just kind of creates this backlog and the streamline for, um, the bills. It, basically, I guess, to summarize, um, really good bills that don't need money just basically get stuck and they get ignored. Uh, and we want our legislative process to be more efficient, right? And that also means preventing these type of bills, uh, from having to go through these unnecessary steps. Um, especially in the legislative session that is only about four months that it convenes. So it's already a tight legislative schedule. And so for non-money requiring, requiring bills, we don't want it to go through that. Um, I think the second one as well is that if we do refer non-fiscal bills to committees, that also gives a lot of power, I believe, to, um, the chairs of those committees. Um, and we, everything that we're trying to do with this resolution is about transparency, but also efficiency. So that's basically why we had it, or we added, um, that portion. And it was also a, uh, recommendation, um, through CISC.
And Maria, not to put you on the spot, but I think you know this, just for context, can you also tell the public around how many bills start out at the session and how many bills end up at the end that get passed? So just so that they understand the numbers.
Yes, so, um, I believe, I, so I'm not gonna give the exact numbers, but, um, last legislative session, I believe there was about five. but, um, last legislative session, I believe there was about five thousand or six thousand bills that get in, that gets introduced and a roughly less than four hundred bills or even less than that, three hundred bills get passed. So it's really, really difficult, especially if you have these types of unnecessary steps to really, you know, move forward good bills. Um, but yeah, so you are better off applying to go to Harvard and getting accepted than having a really good bill pass sometimes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna give it to you, Susan.
Hi, yeah, um, I was just curious, and, and thank you for presenting this and putting this together. I think it's really good. Um, I was just curious, what was the original logic in sending all the bills to finance? If they didn't have any financial implications? Thank you.
That's a really good question. I'm actually, I actually don't have the answer for that. Um, ever since I started advocating at the, you know, legislative session, I never really understood why non-fiscal bills were referred to money committees. Um, but I can, I can definitely research and get back to you on it. Cause I, I, that's a good question that I've never really thought of.
Thank you.
Sure, for a community, any questions or comments? If you can make sure you state your name first.
Aloha, my name is Brett Colbus, I live in Ever Beach. A couple of questions. One, can, uh, can they name any bill that went to finance? That wasn't, uh, a financial, had a financial pitch to it? They can name the bill number, and the other thing is the comprehensive, uh, public financing. What is your definition of comprehensive public financing of elections? Cause I don't want public financing of elections, cause I don't want my tax dollars going to a candidate that I may not like or I don't like. And we already have public financing available to candidates as an option. So is your definition of comprehensive public financing really wanting to make it mandatory public financing? Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Um, so for your first question, um, I believe, so if you go to the Capitol website, usually, um, if you look at the bill drafts or the language, they usually have the dollar sign to show that, um, there is appropriation involved in a certain measure. Um, so there has been a few, or actually, I've seen bills that have had, you know, no appropriation at all, but they were referred to a committee like Ways and Means. Um, and I don't really have like exactly the bill numbers. Um, but I just know that it is a common practice, especially if you want to defer the bills. Um, and for your second question, for us, comprehensive public financing, um, well, basically it would just provide candidates with funds to run, to run their campaigns without really having to rely on private donations and special interests, or, or really just worrying about money being a barrier to campaigning effectively. If we want candidates to really represent the interests of the community and the district that they're representing in, we don't want money to be a barrier to do that. Uh, and I think providing public funds would allow members of the community may not have the resources, but really the passion and willingness to serve their communities, um, compete more fairly in campaigns. So that's kind of our whole reasoning for this comprehensive public financing option.
Okay, if nobody else in person, we can move for any questions or comments online. Tara. Tara, what, Rojas, if you can unmute.
Yeah. Aloha, Rojas. So I was gonna start by saying originally, you know, mahalo for this, it sounds like just to keep them pono, to uphold and just make sure they're acting in good faith, like pono, but we know, of course, you said, of cour, as you said, you know, a lot of money coming in, so a lot of, you know, corruption happens there. However, now as I'm hearing this, and I maybe I had missed part of it, but what was it about this, this funding now? I think I have the same question that the previous testifier said, like, what is this, uh, funding? How does it work? If you could kind of briefly, you know, re, uh, restate that. And yet, at the same time, I understand, because those who are running now and they wanna get in, and they don't have, you know, like the funds, I understand that part, but not everybody who's gonna run is gonna have that, you know, um, honesty, I guess, if you wanna say it, right? To be pono and really listen to the needs of the community. So could you answer those two and maybe like really quickly again, where, who, and where are you from?
Yes, um, sorry, I'm just gonna clarify the question. So you wanna know, um, what public funding is or, uh,
That's part of this resolution, yeah.
Yes, okay, so, uh, again, just to reiterate, it's basically a public financing system that, um, would provide candidates with funds to render, uh, campaigns without relying on private donations. Um, and then another thing is that public financing also helps to diminish the influence of wealthy individuals and corporations so that campaigns better reflect, again, the interests of their communities. Um, and as far as how it would work, um, so right now, I believe we do have like a partial public, um, sorry, public financing, financing, sorry, the words are like not coming out of my mouth, but we have a partial, um, option for candidates, but it's not enough. Um, and so how it works is, it just depends. So for, um, some state and local jurisdictions, they have, um, their own eligibility requirement. So there's like matching funds, um, which is something that we have. So if you make a certain, or, uh, fund, fundraise a certain amount of money, um, then the state matches that. Um, but that's basically what, you know, the public fin, public financing option is. Um, and I just wanna add to that, you know, we just have a primary and we saw the lowest voter turnout in state history. I think it's partly because voters need to feel like invited with good options. So a very comprehensive public financing option would really enhance that part of participation. Um, and elected officials would be more accountable to their constituents. Um, and then your last question, um, my name is Maria Ralhi. Again, I'm with the, uh, I'm with a, a part of a coalition of organizations for governance. Um, that's also led by Common Cause, the Clean Elections Coalition, and other organizations. Thank you, Tara.
Thank you, Maria. Do I have any more on mine? Nothing? I think I have one more here.
I got one real quick. Um, I kinda old school a little bit, well, little bit old school. Uh, for me, resolutions of bills, you know, everybody pass a lot of bills, there's new bills, resolutions, keeps going and going. To me, to make an effective part in our, in our community and what our community wants, our community alone gotta register, our community gotta vote, and we gotta vote for the right people. That's the easiest, fastest way to get things done. So we need to get our community registered, we need to get our community to voting. That's, that's just my take, thank you.
I have one more person, thank you. If you can make sure to state your name first before you start.
My name is Jamie John, Ever Beach resident. So listening to this comprehensive voter fund, is, who is eligible for that? Can just, I mean, is it part of, it's part of the resolution? So if you pass the other four items that seem very reasonable and logical, but then this voter, the, the comprehensive fund, can anybody just apply for that and be like, I'm gonna run for office? I mean, there has to be some kind of criteria, what are the criteria? And where does, and the second question is, where does the money come from? Where's that money? Who's supplying the fund?
Yes, so there are eligibility criterias for the existing partial, um, public funding option. Um, I'm not really sure exactly what the requirements are. Um, I'm pretty new to ad, to good governance advocacy, but we did have, um, a bill last or this past legislative session asking for public fin, or full public financing. Um, but I don't really have the exact details on what, on exactly what the requirements are. Um, but that's why we're just asking, you know, the state ledge to start, you know, to continue having a conversation on public finance and just overall good governance.
Thank you, Maria. Okay, so just a reminder again, we don't have quorum, so we're gonna have to defer any votes on this till at least October, if it comes back on the agenda. Um, I'm gonna move on to section four, which is presentations. She's here, okay. Um, are you doing the Ever Beach Homestead Master Plan? Okay? Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Aloha, I'm Lehuakini Lawkano with the Department of Fine Homelands. I provided a fact sheet as well as a handout about an upcoming meeting. So for those of you that might not be aware, through the Hawaiian Homelands Recovery Act, but I'm not even sure if some of you are familiar. Um, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands is basically the entity who's responsible to administer the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. The Hawaiian Homes Commission Act was passed by Congress in nineteen twenty-one, and it set aside two hundred thousand acres of land, um, to use for homesteading for native wines. Um, there was some lands that was removed from the trust, and so there was a Hawaiian Homelands Recovery Act that was passed by Congress, and it, it allowed for lands to be returned. So one of the lands that was returned is the former Pacific Tsunami Warning Center, um, that is located at the end of Fort Weaver as you head towards, um, the ocean. I mean, well, I guess the golf course. And so that a portion of those lands, eighty acres, came back to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, and we're in the planning process to look at homesteading for that area. So again, I have two fact sheets, uh, two, um, handouts, actually. One is a fact sheet, so it provides a project overview. We did a lot of studies, the first time we came out and we just shared, you know, we got this land, we're going through this process. Now we did some technical studies and we did some beneficiary consultation as well as a survey. And based on the lands that we've had, we have, we identified a potential three hundred eighty total housing units is what we would look at developing. Most of the development would be in the Maoka portion, um, closer to North Road for the single-family residential. And there's some multifamily on the lower portion, but a lot of the lower portion is gonna be more in like community use, um, um, stewardship, community agriculture, because we have to plan for a long horizon. For our homestead leases, they're awarded ninety-nine year leases with the ability to extend another hundred years. So sea level rise is expected to impact the lower portion of our property. So after we did beneficiary consultation, most beneficiaries were concerned about that, but I think this community should also be concerned because our studies show that, um, anything that's Makai of Fort Weaver could potentially be subject to sea level rise. So that's why we're limiting the amount of homes that we plan to develop on the portion of the land that's near Fort Weaver Road, um, closer to, again, um, that portion of the land that's pictured. So that's mainly what we came here to share. Uh, there is a a draft environmental assessment that we are expecting to be submitted that's gonna be available for public comment from September twenty-fourth to October twenty-third. And we will be holding, uh, Ever Beach Homestead Project Community Meeting Wednesday, October ninth, from seven to eight thirty here, um, to discuss this project. I will also be attending Senator, um, Favela's Town Hall meeting to give more information, so anyone who has any questions, just wanted to make sure we shared that information with the Board.
Thank you. Does anyone from the Board have any questions or comments?
I got one. The stewardship area, going along Fort Weaver Road. What you guys gonna put over there, you know, offhand?
So stewardship is basically, um, it can be used by the community that's gonna be there to benefit them and to identify what those purposes would be. So we'd wanna engage whoever chooses to, um, reside in this area. And obviously, we can, you know, we can work with the community if there are things that the community might be interested in.
I've heard pavilions, for parties.
Well, I will definitely take that comment back.
They're just, I'm just saying, just, it's off the, nah, just thinking, cause Pulo Beach Park is just down the road. All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm, I'm Mike Plowman. I'm, uh, great work here. I'm, I'm curious if we'll be able to have a look at the EA prior to September twenty-fourth. Is there a mechanism for that, or do we have to wait until then?
Uh, so the EA will be available for public starting September twenty-fourth. Um, so right now, I know that the Hawaiian Homes Commission is meeting next week. Um, we do have some information in our packet, cause the Commission has to approve, uh, the draft EA or at least review it, and then it goes out to, and it gets submitted through the, um, through the normal state environmental review process, and then that's where any member of the public can access that information. Yeah.
Um, hi, I have, I have a question for you. So for, I'm a teacher, and I spent my first five and a half years teaching at James Campbell High School over here. Right now, I teach in the middle of, uh, Nanakuli Valley, which is Hawaiian Homestead. Um, so the, the, the type of, the population is, is who I work with. But the question I have is not only building houses. When I left Campbell, um, in two thousand twelve, I believe, I think they were at twenty-three hundred or twenty-four hundred, and now they're over three thousand. When you bring in three hundred and, I think, eighty houses, um, you know, and, and the, the homestead houses usually are just not a couple with no kids. They usually have a lot of kids. Is there anything that DHHL does for the community as far as community impact for infrastructure? Or for schools and everything, schools that are already the, the largest school in the state with really large classrooms?
So thank you for that question. I do know we did reach out to the DOE um, to discuss what kind of impact, um, it could be. Now that we have a preferred alternative, we can, um, go back and have those conversations again. Cause originally, when we reached out, we didn't know a number, right? We were just doing our studies, we're at the preliminary stage. Uh, but we can circle back with the DOE and see, um, what that would look like and the impacts to Campbell now that we sort of have an idea. Just so you know too, though, some of this is geared to kupuna. Um, much of our wait lists are actually kupuna. And so we are anticipating some kupuna housing that could actually, um, lessen the number of youth that would be attending the schools. But again, we'll, we'll continue to have those conversations because we know, especially this school is very, Campbell is very, um, overcrowded already. Um, so in terms of the department in general, what we do as it relates to education is many of our lands has, um, public schools, public charter schools, immersion schools, wine-focused charter schools. So many of those, um, types of educational settings are, are actually occur on our lands. And you mentioned Nanakuli, that whole area is homestead land, and on the bottom where Kauai Hona, that's also um, Hawaiian homeland. So those are ways we try to work with the community, um, to provide those kind of resources.
Okay, thank you. Anybody on the table?
Nope.
Okay. Susan?
Hi, yes, um, thank you for your presentation. So my question is, how, um, how did they all determine what part of the land would be impacted by sea level rise? Did they use like the NOAA interactive sea level rise map or?
Yes, they used the sea level rise. We actually had a technical study just on that because we were really concerned. And again, we have to plan for a longer projection than an average home because of our homestead leases. So we had a specific, um, consultant just on sea level rise. And so we have a lot of data related to that, if you're interested in that.
Yeah, thank you so very much. So then, um, if the land, so I understand you're not gonna have homes there. Um, so if the land becomes inundated, well, what, what is the use before the land becomes inundated? And then after it becomes inundated with seawater, what, what's the plan there? Thank you.
So the plan for that land that's lower, closer to Fort Weaver Road is for community agriculture, for stewardship, for community use, those type of activities. I will take the, um, recommendation about maybe a pavilion in that stewardship area. There are a couple spots, because when the sea level rise analysis was done towards, um, the, the portion that's closest to sort of the, I guess, Campbell High School side, as opposed to the, this, the portion close to, closer to the golf course, there's two portions at the sort of very extreme ends. That, that's where we're gonna look at the multifamily, um, units in that area. And then everything, again, more Maoka, um, as you head towards North Road is for, um, single-family residential. And we got a lot of input about the importance of, um, you know, for, for traffic to flow through the area. So there's gonna be ability to come in through North Road as well as from Fort Weaver Road with the intention that, God forbid, if there's ever- from Fort Weaver Road with the intention that, God forbid, if there's ever a disaster, people can head Maoka from that area and go through to head through North Road.
Great. Thank you so much. It sounds like, like really thought of. Everything is really comprehensive. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Susan. For the public or community, if you guys have any questions or comments, you can just come up to the mic, just make sure to say your name first before you speak.
My name's Dave Morris. One of the things, I'm the committee chair for the Cub Scout Pack that runs, or that operates out here and we have families that live in the Hawaiian homelands up in Kapalea right now. One thing that you might wanna consider in addition to just, you know, pavilions for parties is maybe looking at, you know, pavilions that could accommodate, you know, family-type gatherings, but also youth activities. You know, our group, it's up to, you know, at our peak, we had about a hundred and twenty, including the scouts and their families. And finding a place to house them has been a challenge for me. So I don't know if that's something that you would consider. I know it's a long-term project, but something to keep in the back of my.
So definitely those uses would require other resources. So partnering with other organizations would be a good way to utilize those areas.
Seeing that there's nobody here in person, I'm gonna move online to Tara Rojas.
Aloha Tara Rojas. You know, and this is great, like for housing or Kanaka, you know, that's important. And I was just gonna mention though, sorry, there's some feedback here. This is awesome and this is great. And I just wanted to tie it in that this is how, what the Aina, you know, should be for, you know, ninety-nine year leases and for the two-house Kanaka. I just wanted to ask you though, you know, if you and also the board, you know, are aware of just the competing nest of private developers that's coming up. For example, there are two. So it has nothing to do, in other words, I'm like supporting, you know, supporting it. But, and it just, I wanted just to bring to light that how there's a Alasai development, a Hyatt Place, you know, for the hotel, the Colliers Hawaii, five-point-five acre, you know, Huakale Resort, two hundred twenty-five rooms, you know, while we are in a water crisis or we get to number five, I'll bring that up. But just I wanna make sure that this, you know, they has a priority amongst, you know, all these other competing development, overdevelopment that's coming up. And I just wanted to say, you know, state that it's so hard to hear about how fast and how much this development, other development can take place when, you know, just to even house Kanaka, it takes so long, you know, and the system, you know, like Kupuna will have these housing. So that, you know, that is very awesome. And I just wanted to add that to it because these other developments are gonna compete for the water. And do you know about the water in that area? Is it like the D W line?
So based on the studies we've done, we would hook into Board of Water Supply, not through the the water that is subject to some of the issues with Red Hill. So we would actually be with Board of Water Supply first. And then secondly is the Department of Hawaiian Homelands is a priority for water use. So we actually are supposed to be considered for our uses ahead of other uses like development, like you mentioned.
Yes, so you know, advocate and make sure that happens, that it doesn't take, taken away from, you know, these housing. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Thank you for coming. Thanks. Okay, so for four B, we have the Queen's Health Systems Acquisition of Kahimohala update. Okay. So I'm gonna call one more time for presentation four B, the Queen's Health Systems Acquisition of Kahimohala update. If anybody is here for that presentation in person or online. Okay, so we're gonna move on to five, which is residents and community concerns and community announcements. So I wanna make sure that I repeat, I'm gonna actually pass it back to Jana if she can repeat the five, right after five, it's the time limit, what the, the time limits and things are for that.
So just a reminder, everyone is limited to one turn and two minutes per person.
And Mitchell is gonna be keeping time. Okay, he is. So I'm gonna open it up first in person. So if you guys wanna come up, two minutes, Mitchell's phone is gonna buzz if it hits at two minutes, please respect that. And if you guys can make sure that when you guys come to the microphone, can you please state your name first before you guys start speaking? Thank you.
Good evening, Corey Ascension. Aloha. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the board, members of the community. We have an issue that I'm bringing forward of Haabush. This past weekend, we had some accidents. It shows in your guys' paperwork, we have a bill that was passed in two thousand twenty-two, SB twenty-sixty-five, it's for droning, right? So what happened was, we had a gentleman, not from our community, that droned his fishing line. So I have no problem with drones. He left it out the whole weekend and serious accidents, including me, got caught in the mouth. I have all these people wanna give their testimony, how they went to the hospital, they got hurt. So it's a big issue that we need to look into in getting signage for the beach, for the sea signage, you know, during the daytime, take your poles out. You guys can fish nighttime, take your poles out during the day when the old timers come in the morning. And then also, we don't have a lifeguard stand. You know, it's very serious because two years ago I saved a little girl, I cracked my head right open. When I dove, I dove right into the boulder. I was in the hospital, I was home bedridden for four, five months. Till this day, I have, whatever you call it, my earrings, I cracked my head right open just to help a five-year-old. And it was tourists, they didn't know what to do. So, you know, in Haabush, we really need to get some signage for drones and a lifeguard stand would be great. Yeah? So also, on the twentieth of this month, I have the Keiki, the Ever Beach Community Keiki's Fishing Tournament. Would be nice for you board members to come out, Julie, since you're campaigning, maybe just meet some of the people, the kids, they would love that. Right? So, yeah. Any questions, concerns?
Board members, if you guys have any questions?
Hi, Mike Plowman. I can appreciate this because I've been hooked. Yeah, but not at, not at Haabush, but I've been hooked at, at empty lots, more than once. It's a popular surfing spot. It's also a great fishing spot. I like to fish there as well sometimes. But, I mean, it's common courtesy.
Right.
If it's, if the surf is on, you know, you throw your line somewhere else.
Yeah.
And, and it's also a no-fly zone for drones. I mean, forget fishing. Anything for sure, Diamond Head of Empty Lots is no drones, period, without talking to Tower. It's, it's a Class B airspace to the, from the floor all the way up to whatever the ceiling is, and I believe it extends out to about Haabush. I think it's a no-fly zone.
Oh, yeah, it is. They're still flying it though.
Period. Yeah, I, and I think it's about time that Haabush had a lifeguard stand.
Please, please do. It's very dangerous there. Also, if you can see the pictures of all the children surfing and you can see, clearly see the line and they all got tangled. I have some beachgoers here that will testify after me, you know, they wanna show their concerns just as well. Mahalo.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Derek Anselva. Thank you, board, for letting us speak for tonight. Oh, yeah, there is a big issue about these longline fishing guys out there. Their lines can go up to eight hundred yards. So that's eight football fields that they put these things out with a gallon bottle at the end of that. And the guys that been doing the fishing, they don't care about the surface. You know, I mean, if you see my picture, I got the line right up on my nose and as soon as I felt it, pushed my hand up and then I got cut right here. If I got cut right here and bled to death, I do take blood thinners. So I could have just died right there, you know, or again, and this is not the first time that I hit those lines. I mean, we gotta dodge these lines. These lines are three to four feet above the water. So and these lines are thin, so a lot of times you don't see them. And if like, these, like you're saying, the community is growing. And if somebody wanted to learn surfing or paddling out their kayak or something, they're not gonna know these lines are out there. They're gonna get, they're gonna get cut, they're gonna get hurt. So my whole thing tonight is on ocean safety. And we do need the lifeguard stand out there to protect. I mean, Ever Beach is growing. Like you guys said this evening, that there's more homes being built. And you know they're gonna wanna go down to the beach and then later on they wanna go surf because they see everybody surfing or, you know, diving or whatever. But we need safety in our oceans right now. And the guys that are doing it, they don't care about surfers or anybody around there. They'll leave their poles out all day, all weekend. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Saori Hill. So mostly, he already experienced everything, but, oh, yeah, that's Saturday, yeah. Saori Hill, so last week's Saturday, I didn't know about the fishing line is over there. And then fishing line is totally tangled on my neck. And then I needed to take it out, even when I riding, it's so hard. And I had a line and then I was so lucky because that line wasn't loose the time. If it was tight, maybe I died already. So I, I told him, the fisherman, but he not listened to me, so to us. Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you so.
I just wanted to add on a little bit about, on my friend here. She went to the, to the owner of the pole and she begged like this to the guy, she, please bring in your, bring in your line. And she showed him her net. And then she went back the second time to tell that guy, you know, bring in your line, please. And she's begging him like this and the guy wouldn't listen. He just shoved her off and left the pole out there all day long.
Sorry. On the bottom right of the picture with all the children is the guy that injured all of us this past weekend. One of the community, the president for the, I mean, the Oniula Beach Club, that's him talking to the guy. He warned the guy three times and he still left it out. When I was surfing, I had a duck under it like a few times and the one time it caught me in the mouth, he still wouldn't. He, he still flew his drone Sunday evening and he dropped it when we were leaving. So he probably stayed till Monday. That guy needs to be caught or, or, you know, talked to, reprimanded, true DLNR. You guys really gotta jump before somebody dies out there because that line is so tight and the tension, it knocked me off my board right in my mouth. Like, I didn't see it, I got caught right in my mouth. You know, so it's, it's very dangerous. They could have took her head off.
Hello, my name is Kanani Langley. I'm an Ever Beach resident. This is concerning the, this line that's going on. Anybody from HPD, Public Safety, they gone already, yeah? The question I get is, being that this is somebody's personal property, the fishing point of fishing line, and is doing bodily damage to people, isn't that a assault? Isn't that an assault charge of some kind? I just wondering, you know, it's a question, being that the guy owned the fishing point of fishing line and it's hurting people. You know what I mean? If I go do that to somebody outside, that's assault, right? So that's my question to the, the board of finding out from HPD. Because from what I'm getting to, is this is not the first time that this guy and his equipment had done harm to people. This past week was the second time from what I'm getting, so it's not his first rodeo. But my question is, if this personal equipment belonging to the guy doing bodily damage to a person, if that's an assault charge, you know what I mean? Thank you very much.
Okay, so if you guys are gonna speak, can you guys please line up so that we can make sure that we know who's, who's gonna be speaking and we can get through this?
Barbara Chessy, I'm a resident of Ever Beach. I wanna talk about a phone number, three-one-one, for complaints to the city. It's on the internet that you could dial three-one-one if you have a complaint, but can't hear me. Thank you. Yeah, I wanna talk about three-one-one phone number. You know, we have nine-one-one, that's an emergency. We have two-one-one, that is Aloha United Way with all different options to different departments. But the three-one-one doesn't work. If you wanna call three-one-one to make a complaint to the city, it does not work. And you must have an app. And I tried to get the app and I couldn't get the app after, you know, like a half hour. So United or Aloha United Way doesn't have an app. You can just dial two-one-one and it's so nice to, well, you can just, you know, talk and get your job done. But there's a lot of things that we could be, I kinda lost my train of thought. You know, the three-one-one, there's a lot of reason to call for complaints sometimes. So I would like you to help get that three-one-one started for the Sidian County of Honolulu for complaints and not an app, just the same as Aloha United Way. Thank you. Thank you.
Jamie John, Ever Beach resident. Just for the record, there are some copies of this lot and the pictures back on the table back there. But just to expound a little bit on the issue, it is an ongoing issue and it's not just one guy who was, who happened to be there last weekend, who hurt some of the folks who are here tonight. The issue is that they're sending the drones out or they have their fishing lines out, surfers are in there. And if we cut the lines or if we, we become the ones who are responsible for enforcing a law, then there's something wrong with that. Because what happens is, like what happened with me, I know Steve is out in the hallway there, he was a witness, I was threatened by a group of people because of the fishing line issue. And it's not that we don't want people to fish, we just want everybody to be able to enjoy the ocean. And so the, but the drones is against the law. They passed the law, it's not enforced. And so, but we cannot be, we, as the community, cannot be responsible for enforcing the law. So that, we need to have people who are supposed to do that come and enforce. When we call for DLNR or whomever needs to come and they don't come, then people get hurt. So.
Sorry, one more. Corey Ascension. Speaking on, on her issue, I was attacked because the guy thought I cut his line two years ago. He called me out of the water. I don't wanna mention his name. He said that I cut his line, but it wasn't me. I knew who it was, I seen what they did because his line crossed all the way over overnight when the wind blew it. So it's in the surface area. So I was the first one that's close to him. So he called me out of the water and he attacked me. But little did he know, I had my family behind him, so they came around him. Then he knew my family. So then there was a big squabble going on. But now he's my good friend and he's helping me out with the fishing tournament. So, you know, he's showing the kids how to tie hooks, but you can see how the anger is over there. You know, fishing line, they take that, you know, to heart. So if it gets cut, they'll blame anybody. So that's why we don't wanna do it. So we need some kind of authority. There's a lot of times they said they called DLNR, nothing happens. So this is why we're here at the board. We figure we can come to you guys and you guys set an agenda or do something because the word's going, like, they're not gonna do nothing about it. It's on. It's ongoing for years, you know? I, I literally fought with the guy, you know what I'm saying? But then he knew my cousins, now we're friends, you know? So he asked me, can I help you at the fishing tournament, show the kids how to tie hooks? I said, what a way to meet, but you know, yeah, of course, you know? So please do, guys. Please take this seriously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanna make sure I reiterate what Jana had said. The um, rules of speaking is that it's limited to one turn for two minutes per person. Thank you. And we still have people online to speak.
My turn. Uh, humble request uh, from all the politicians. If they can uh, come at the next meeting, tell me how many bills they went pass. The Senate, the House, the Council. Uh, a few of them I knew. I just like know if they did anything. And what they did for pass bills. Introducing bills is uh, you know, I'm a dozen. I like know what they went pass. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody here in person, anybody else?
Sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt the conversation that was happening. My name is Hope Leon Fisher. So I'm just, I mean, adding to DHHL and traffic, cause I, I actually went online and heard some of the um, concerns about the homes in Ever Beach and the, one of the concerns that they spoke about was traffic. And so, I know in light of that recent um, you know, accident with those um, the couple on Geiger and Fort Weaver. Um, I know there was chatter on the, in the media about red light cameras, speeding cameras, you know, all that good stuff. But you know, I, and I know a lot of us and thousands of people travel on these roads in Ever Beach. And so, um, I was just wondering, has anything been done to improve our traffic here? I mean, I see lights here, that's not syn, that's not in sync. I see room for improvement, like just the road that from um, Geiger to Keanui. I, I mean, oh, Keanui, sorry, um, where it goes from three lanes, then two, then a turn lane. I mean, you know, some examples like that. Has anybody ever looked at that? I mean, and then also the other thing I have is the, I know it sounds counterintuitive, but the speed limits on the, on Fort Weaver. I mean, it's 35 miles per hour and you know, what, 25, 235? And it's like, you're, I mean, just thinking about that and thousands of people that travel on Fort Weaver, is that realistic? I mean, I'm not a subject matter expert, but I mean, if anybody has ever, you know, evaluated or reevaluated, reassessed the traffic. I mean, even those, the signals, I mean, before you had a countdown. Now it's like just solid and you're like, okay, do I stop, go, stop, go, you know? Just trying to time the red light or even yellow lights. So, and then back to speed limits because I know the speed limit, you know, most of Fort Weaver is 35. But some of our residential areas, they got, I mean, the city or state just posted 25 miles per hour and you can barely even get car through the road. You know what I mean? So 25 on a residential, barely getting a car through versus three, I mean, like four, six lanes? So I just wanted to, to ask if, like, has anything been done about our traffic and, or will be done about our traffic just to improve like the drive? You know, or even sanity for that matter, cause it's just so busy out here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing there's none, nobody left in the room, can I, can I ask her a question real quick?
Sure. So we have, I think, FON, is it FON? A DOT that comes out and give a quarterly meeting? For a DOT, so, and also John Rogers, one of our board members. He's, he's heavy into the, you know, the transportation. So, um, I know there's complete streets that's being done. So he can get kinda like on overview, but nobody has gave, I guess, with all the new development coming in.
Right.
Kinda like on complete, cause you got the uh, development across Renton Road and then gonna have another development on
Right.
in a sync park. Then you got Gentry with another home, a bunch of homes, Ever with another, a bunch of homes. But yeah, I mean, I think the DOT needs to come up and kinda give a little bit more, I guess, forward planning, what, what's gonna be done. But I know they're gonna start restriping, but like you said, three lane, two lane, three lane, one lane.
It makes no sense.
Yeah.
Right.
We're trying to get somebody out.
Into um, you know, just the, the traffic in Ever Beach.
But the best thing to do, like me, I don't see traffic, cause once you leave four o'clock in the morning and then you come home at nine, no more traffic.
I'm following you actually, and there is traffic, cause now we deal with Fort Weaver and then you jump onto their freeway and that's another set of traffic.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, yeah, something to help us out.
Yeah, thank you for your concern. Thank you very much.
Okay, someone to move online to Tara Rojas?
Hey, Aloha. Can you see here? Wait one second. Okay, so really quickly, I have concerns and I don't know how I'm gonna do it in two minutes. Like this right here is huge concern. Water. If we're not taking it seriously now, when or if Ernie Lau decides to shut down that third, um, third well, Ka'amilo, which serves AIA, which is 1 million gallons a day, we're gonna be pulling, or that community is gonna be pulling from the Windward Side. And there's, there's already two other wells that shut down. So, I don't, how can we as Ever Beach Neighborhood Board, you know, a community, just like the resolution that for, you know, the good government reforms, how can we do it to one, limit and stop this overdevelopment? They're talking about a 225 room hotel for, at Huakalei. And then also with room for more, the Alakai at Ho'opili, it's gonna be a hotel. And then you have, you know, your Haseko as well and your Gentry, they're gonna continuously build. And we have the water energy sewage crisis that not only on our island, in Kona, we just heard in the testifiers, and they, they actually got the planning commission to stop the Keokah, uh, three, three-story homes and then that four-story uh, building that was not gonna be affordable as they touted, right? So even 1750, that's not affordable. So, how can we come together to stop this overdevelopment as well as the ocean wind turbines? So Hawaii Kai Neighborhood Board, Kuli Oo Board, as well as, you know, they came together to talk about the Ka'ivi channel, ocean wind turbines in an ocean with, you know, uh, with the salt water, you know, it just, it, it's, it's affecting, there's so much things going on. So I also wanna request, when can that Hawaiian Affairs Committee please start and meet? And two, how else can we come forward to the board where we have a discussion? Cause it's not feasible in just two minutes to modify and then there's no follow-up. Like literally, until it's too late, there's Maui at like a water conservation request. Kona has a 25% water conservation because one well shut down. And even like in uh, Hilo and Ka'u and like Kona, they have like sewage issues. So.
You can wrap it up.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. So just avoid waiting until there's a disaster with our water and in the ocean. So if a, a line, a fishing pole line causes that much damage, can you imagine, you know, if one ocean wind turbine company gets in, so what can we do? How can we tackle this with more than two-minute uh, speaking opportunity?
Okay, thank you. Um, oh, Agnes says it. Okay, Agnes, if you can unmute.
Hi, my name is Agnes Malate. Um, I'm a longtime advocate and volunteer for Vavna Village at the end of Renton Road by the train station. And with me um, on this Zoom to, or WebEx is another resident. My parents still live there and it's very dear to my heart. Um, I'm here for one, the priority was addressed and hopefully the police will take action immediately to dismantle what has been boarded up and supposedly is gonna be used as a game, game room or gambling. So there are other safety issues that we're, I'm concerned about and so are the other residents. Yeah, you saw the brush fire that happened not too long ago and that's very close to the houses. Um, and they could have easily been, um, it could have been a Lahaina ish, issue. So that kinda actually relates to the water too. Dear thing is of the streetlights, only three of the 1215 streetlights in the area are working. So oftentimes what happens is people dump um, large furniture, tires, all kinds of things in our neighborhood. And as much as we try to look out for um, who's doing it, um, it's hard when we can't see in the middle of the night. And then two, coming from the train, people speed up and we have a lot of elderly. Um, and there is no sidewalk because the sidewalks are overgrown. So the nearest crosswalk is actually by Kapolei Parkway. So there are several safety issues that our residents, you know, we tried to clean up and then the next day the mattress is on the side of the road again. And more recently, the city has been more vigilant about keeping um, the, um, clearing the debris. But we do ask um, the support of the Neighborhood Board to um, address some of these um, safety issues. And uh, we do have police officers come there and we'd appreciate it if um, they do more in terms of making sure that uh, the dogs, we also have problems with the dogs being let loose. There's actually um, houseless encampment across the street from, across Renton Road from the um, on the temple, the Honganji Mission. So that was very close to where there was the fire, one end of where the fire was. So one had actually been, I think, probably um, affected. There's still one encampment there. So if you look, it's more visible now since there's been a brush fire. So please, um, thank you for this opportunity to share some of our concerns. And we do have a lot of elderly in the village who are not able to navigate the technology as well as may not have, may not be as proficient in English and have the um, I guess, um, courage to come before the Neighborhood Board and speak their mind. So on behalf of the community who aren't able to join us here, I hope you will um, consider these. And we are very um, willing to, you know, work with um, the resources that's available to take care of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Agnes. So I want, in speaking with the neighborhood assistant, um, and he works for the city, cause this is a, a city board, I wanna make sure I address a couple of things. Um, when he goes back to his office, cause he is a full-time city worker from a city office, that there's a couple of um, city boards that were mentioned, which was ocean safety, HPD, um, HFD for fire mitigation and environmental services, right, ENV. What he can do is when he goes back to his office, they can go back and make referrals to these agencies to see if they can take care of those. Um, only for city ones though, nothing for the state. So even for, just to make sure, when they, when the issue of streets um, come up, some streets are owned by the city and some are owned by the state. So that is gonna be an issue and somebody might bring up a certain street and it can be addressed because it was a city. Another street might be a state street. So that's gonna be an issue there with the jurisdiction on who, who runs it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more hands raised. So we're gonna go to 6A, Hunt, any VA clinic update? I think he, oh, he's in person.
Well, good evening, everyone. Members of the board, members of the community. I'm Tony Gaston. I just wanna give you a quick update on how things are going out at Kalailoa. Um, if you remember, I've been up here trying to uh, talk about the roads because we are upgrading those perimeter roads. And the hope, if you remember where we're, we could try and open up one of those roads very soon, but we did have that obstacle of still trying to get the streetlights energized. So the travel pattern that's existing right now, if you, if you drive over there, all the traffic is on the Makai side of the roadway. So you can kinda see what it looks like now. In the future, when Hawaiian Electric comes in and makes the streetlights energize, then the traffic will shift and will have the Makai side again be the traffic going eastbound, Malka side will be westbound. Um, again, we are just waiting for Hawaiian Electric. They have told us now that by mid-October, they should be able to come in and do their initial work. And then our contractor can come out and get those streetlights turned on. So if everything works okay, we'll be able to get the, um, the lights operational in October and get all those lanes open for you guys. One other thing I did wanna bring up is because uh, I've been monitoring this, I've been spending a lot of time out there and I made a circle at that intersection. That's the FDR Kamakila intersection because I observe a lot of uh, cars that don't like to stop when they come down from Costco. They just come down and turn. They don't care. And it makes me worry uh, cause there's stop signs. They're very visible, but unfortunately, people are just ignoring them. So I just wanted to uh, you know, let everybody know, hey, we're doing our best, but at the same time, it, it is a three-way stop. So if you can just obey those stop signals. That's my quick update. Are there any questions?
Marvin, can you hold on really quick?
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Gaston, thanks a lot.
Sure.
Last time you were here, you showed us a photo that had a bunch of uh, properties on it that you guys owned. And we were pressed for time. I didn't get to ask you, do you guys own those properties outright? Or is that a lease thing?
Okay, so we own outright about 75% of them. We are still working on terms with the Navy to get the remaining 25%. No problem.
Anything else from the board? Nothing on this one? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Marvin, on the room. Hi, Mr. Hunt. Uh, I got a question I want to ask. I noticed that uh, when you're coming out of uh, where you said that stop was, okay, so going back to Ever Beach, you know, south side, not west, cause I, some people confuse with south and west. Uh, I noticed that on the right side where they put like bricks, you know, on the right side road?
Yes.
There's no place for you to ride your bike, cause if you ride your bike, you'd be slowing down traffic. So basically, the only place is to go on the sidewalk?
The, okay, so those bricks are called a paved drain system and they're only like that to drain water. You know, rainwater that comes out, so it percolates into the pavement. Um, bikes, cars are allowed to drive on top of them. So there aren't specific bike lanes for these roadways on FDR because those roadways were designed in conformance with a memorandum of understanding that was created between three city and county agencies and DOT and HCD.
I think it was bad planning, but I see a lot of cracks in the bricks.
Okay, so the paved drain that you're talking about where all the traffic is, those are gonna be um, replaced and repaired. They are already.
Oh, that's another waste of taxpayer money. Didn't do it right.
Um, that's an unfortunate comment because Hunt's paying for it. I don't know where you get taxpayer.
Well, okay, with Hunt's paying for it, my bad. But actually, it's really bad. There's hardly any room for you to ride.
Excuse me?
It said there's hardly any room for, for you to ride your bike. Because it's basically that line, that lane, when it takes one car to go through there. So basically, there's no room for you to ride your bike.
Because those lanes were open um, on a temporary basis to allow traffic through. We didn't wanna just keep them closed. So
Right.
it could have been done with smaller lanes, but we tried to make them as big as we could.
Well, I think it's terrible. It's unfortunate. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, any other questions in person? Nothing online? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, next up is gonna be 6B, Gentry Homes.
Yes, hi. Um, I'm online. Um, Sunny Rosario with Gentry. Am I able to share my screen by any chance?
Yes, you can.
Okay, awesome. Oh, sorry. Okay. One second. Ah, okay, never mind. Um, it requires me to, to quit and reopen. Um, but I can, um, it was just an update on our Geiger um, light uh, roadway light. Um, and I can uh, send it to you and it was already sent to the chair. But um, I know that we've been updating you all um, on this progress and currently right now, um, so the design plans have been submitted uh, to uh, various parties for approval and the city agencies, so DPP in this case and DTS have um, reviewed it and have given us comments. Uh, and so right now we uh, Gentry is in the process of um, reviewing those comments and editing them. And then it'll go back um to DPP again for them to review it before our final approval. Um and so right now, after, so this process, the commenting section uh could take anywhere from six to twelve months. And then after that, then it moves on to um a contract will be selected and then traffic signal parts will be ordered and fabricated, then brought in. And then traffic signals will be installed. Um I apologize, the the little table we have is much better at showing you a more um delineated timeline. Um but I can share that with you after. And that's uh, that's all for now.
Any questions from the board? Okay, any questions from the community? Nothing online? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
The next up. Okay. Hi, Senator Favela, go ahead.
Yeah, so we understand um all of this, DTS going back and forth. But uh we can't wait every month. There's no way you can end up giving uh the board members and even the elected officials uh more updates when it's coming up. Because by saying that, oh, it's going to be twelve months, this and that, I mean, it's it's great. But how long already that we've been waiting uh for this? How long the process take and and why did it take so long for you guys to commit to you guys uh a draft or whatever you designed to the city? Because if the city is taking long, so it's not being uh with the city and not not so much Gentry, but then the city chair is not taking this as a um a a need, it's not a want. It's an emergency situation. The timeline, they move every other community. They push them through real quick when it's an emergency. When it comes to our community, here we are again, waiting, 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 waiting. So take this back, and I'm going to write a letter to uh the the city too. But we need to do better. Gentry need to advocate stronger, and we had deaths in that area. Uh this is not a regular timeline, like any other development in light. Yeah, with other communities, the lights and stuff, we have real quick traffic coming devices, speed harms, everything is done like that. And again, here we are, twelve more months. It's like Russian roulette. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to six C, Haseko Homes. Okay, no thanks.
Hello, hi, it's Christine. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Like, I'm sorry, I can't get my camera to work, so I apologize about that. But I do have a a quick update and announcement. Um for those who don't know me, I'm Christine Bayani. I'm with Haseko. Um I am the community coordinator and I work under the direction of Lisa and Anoria. Uh she's going to be out of the office for a few months. And um I'll be covering for her while she's out. So I wanted just to share um that we do have a beautification project happening on Saturday, September twenty-first at Oniola Beach Park from eight AM to eleven AM. Um we initially had our RSVP or the uh registration deadline, September ninth. And then there was so much um participation that we extended it to the eleventh. But now we're extending it to the sixteenth. So if anyone is still interested, you could email me at info@haseko.com. And I can provide you with the um waivers for the sitting commie. Um and we are providing lunch um to all registered participants. Um we're um kind of discouraging walk-ups because we'd like to be able to provide lunch for everyone. So um if you are interested, please email me first so I can get a head count by September sixteenth, Monday. And um we uh if you have any questions about that, please feel free. I'm sorry that I don't have a a flyer to post for the neighborhood board. Uh but my camera's not working, so I wouldn't be able to show that as well. But um if you have any questions, I can take them back and I can um get back to you next month.
Okay, thank you, Christine. Any questions from the board? Any questions in, for the community?
Sure.
And then online? Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to uh let the board members know. As we say, congratulations to Lisa. She just had a a new baby, so our love and uh support for her. And uh we could see her coming back, but again, congratulations to uh on her, a new baby.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
The next uh agenda item is six D, Dr. Horton, Ho'opili update. Okay, not here. Going to move on to the next one, which is seven, government officials. Limited to three minutes per report, follow-up questions and answers and comments limited to one turn and one minute per person. So for seven A, uh if I have a representative from the US Marine Corps? Okay. Hi.
Hey, good evening to everybody. It's a pleasure to see a lot of you again and meet some of you for the first time. Uh my name is Lieutenant Colonel Andrew Gager. I'm the Director of Operations for Marine Corps Base Hawaii. Uh Colonel Bevan and Jordan Fox, who you usually see here, both have other obligations this evening, so you're stuck with the third string tonight, and I apologize for that. Uh I did bring one first stringer with me, and I'd like to start there if I could uh by introducing uh the new officer in charge of the Puloa Range Training Facility, uh Chief Warrant Officer Three, Gunner Dan Hubbard. So many of you remember Chris Simzer, uh who, among other things, recently delivered a presentation about surface danger zones. Dan is his uh replacement as as he's moved on to Okinawa. Dan is actually coming to us from Okinawa, where he operated the rifle range on that island, uh as well as serving as a weapons and training expert for Third Reconnaissance Battalion. And he's a wealth of experts, several decades in the Marine Corps, including many years here on Hawaii. I'm excited to have him on the job, and I know he's eager to meet with all of you. A couple of quick follow-up items, pending any other questions from the board or community. Uh first, regarding the Puloa sampling and analysis plan, I'm happy to report that we've transmitted a draft copy of our site investigation report to the Hawaii Department of Health. We're currently working with our state counterparts to finalize that report for full public release. And once again, we appreciate your continued patience as we root through a fairly complex bureaucratic process. Out of respect to that process and specifically to our counterparts at DOH, I don't want to go into great detail before we've had a chance to digest that together and fully work through our mutual process. But I can say that our sampling did not identify any areas of immediate risks to public health. Uh I'd also like to follow up on a request uh from you, Mr. Plowman, at last uh month's board for more information regarding training throughput numbers at Puloa. I can talk to you offline about some of the specifics of this. We have collected that information. Uh we've pushed it up. Because of FOIA was generated, we've got some additional layers of legal review, and there's some technical details we're working through. Again, I can fill you in on some more details about that. Uh, I do expect that that we'll have you unanswered in the next few days. We're making sure that that's as complete as possible. And with that, uh I have nothing else pending your questions.
Thank you. Uh any questions from the board? Okay, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Colonel. Um can you tell me when the next uh working group meeting will be for the lead uh working group?
Uh I I do not have that information. Um again, we're we're a party and advisor to that board. I defer to um the leader of that working group and and the other members, so.
Uh would that be the representative uh?
Yeah.
Representative's office?
Um, nothing on here? Okay, any questions or comments from the community? Nothing online? Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
So the next one up is seven B, which is the US Navy.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members of the community board. Uh happy to have this opportunity to speak again to you to give you a Navy Closure Task Force update. Um things are moving along. Got a frog in my throat. Things are moving along. We had an open house on August the twenty, yeah, August the twenty-first over at Monalua Terrace. About fifty people showed up. It was a good crowd, had a great interaction with the community. And uh we've identified a tentative date. I hesitated to go it, but I'm going to go ahead and say it, on twenty November, we're looking for a proper venue. Uh we're looking at several different areas. One of them is here in Eva Beach. Uh different places so we can reach the people that were affected by the water. But the twentieth of November, and we'll keep you updated with uh the decisions on those locations. Um, let's see. A reminder that the water system remains in compliance with the state and federal uh regulators. And we routinely test the whitewash shaft, which is the Navy's only source of drinking water for the base. And it's located over six and six miles from Red Hill, and it remains in compliance with the EPA's lead and copper rule. Uh another thing is, the Navy Closure Task Force announced on twenty-nine August, the end of last month, that personnel would begin cleaning the second set of tanks. So if you remember, we were doing seven and eight, and we finished the sludge removal. We're prepping those tanks for the power washing, for the for the pressure washing, I guess. I just, I keep saying power, but I mean pressure wash. Uh when they finished that sludge removal, they noticed some weaknesses in the structure that they wanted to address. So they're doing that. This is the structure, which is that center cone of scaffolding, I guess is a better word. They they saw some weaknesses, so they're fixing those right now in both tanks seven and eight. Meanwhile, they're doing degassing uh tank six. The degassing has started with um the DOH's approval. Uh the degassing, so we're back to that AQM monitoring, uh the air quality monitoring that that we worked with the public in securing and setting up. Uh the hourly reports go on, they're posted on the website. The website and also the app. If you don't have the app, get the app. The app's great. I'll pass it to you in an email. The currently, there's forty groundwater monitoring wells with twenty-one new wells and twenty-two, the the twenty-two, the twenty-second at the end of the month, right? Twenty-second well at the end of the month. With that, I'll move on over to Uncle Vic. We'll bring you the base updates.
Thank you, Brother Duna. Sorry about that. Victor Flint, Public Works. Recently, uh the Navy, working with the State of Hawaii, transferred two large wastewater centrifuge uh devices to Maui. The centrifuges um separate the water and the solid waste to improve their wastewater operations. Also, the RIMP pack, the RIMP pack is the world's largest maritime exercise. But the difference between this RIMP pack and others, uh portion of it dealt with emergency response, rescue, recovery, and restoration. I'm going to use that to segue into our season hour. We're in hurricane season. Hurricane season is from June through November. And we dodged some tropical storms and bullets southeast of Hawaii. And the Navy's ready to assist if we get the call. And we pray for the best, and we prep for the worst. That's all I have. Are there any questions for Brother Duna or myself?
Okay, board members, do you have any questions?
Hi, Mr. Flint, Plowman. Uh, uh question about those two centrifuges is, does that in any way impact the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant that's right there at the mouth of Pearl Harbor?
No.
Or any other one, is it?
Not ours. Yeah, not our wastewater treatment plant. So we're, we, they're used for backup. But right now, the sense of urgency more is towards Maui, and that's why they went there.
Okay, any other board member on the table? No? Okay, board member online, Susan?
Yes, hi, yes. Um so I want to uh comment on the lead. So when the Navy goes in and tests these homes for lead, they, well, they're testing it for a whole plethora of chemicals. But for, and they flush before they test, okay? The EPA, in their lead and copper rules, calls for, if you're going to test for lead, for the water not to be used for six hours and to take the first draw. That way, you can tell if there's lead in the water, and it could be from the premise plumbing, it could be from the home, you know. And so that is not being done by the Navy. They're not taking the first draw. Um they're flushing it and then doing, you know, the whole plethora of testing for a whole lot of chemicals. So I just did want to clarify that.
Say anything you guys, answer the question at all? No. So the, we're within, we're well within EPA and the regulators' full compliance as far as the sampling procedures that we use.
For, for the long-term water testing in regards to Red Hill.
The extended drinking.
Lead specifically, that test is not in compliance with the EPA lead and copper rules. Because though you're supposed to tell the residents not to use their water overnight for six hours, and then you're supposed to take the first draw. That is not occurring.
Okay, I'll have to take that back, Susan. I'm not familiar enough with that process for lead. The drinking water outside of Red Hill. I'll take that back, Susan. Thanks for the question. Great question.
All right, thank you. Um and again, um I I really do wish the Navy would show up to the Community Representation Initiative meetings because that's where we can have a back and forth. And um there's a meeting in September, and I know uh the Navy's not going to be there, but I'm I'm sure hoping that they'll show up in October because the Community Representation Initiative is the venue to interact with the community. So thank you.
We have plenty of open houses. We uh attend.
That's not, that that is not the Community Representation Initiative where we, well, I I'm stepping off that board, um but where the committee members ask you questions and where uh the community at large can ask you questions. And we come up with the agenda, not the Navy.
Okay, Susan, thank you.
Hi, Susan. It's Karen Davis with the EPA. Um based on the last CRI meeting, we, you know, we're left realizing there's a lot of confusion about lead. So we are putting together a presentation for the next CRI meeting, and we're hoping you can attend. And hopefully, that'll shed some light on all of this. Everyone's welcome, but we don't know what day it is, either the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth.
Right, there's, there's some conflict around.
Susan, I got a call time. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so do I have any questions from the, uh sorry, questions or comments from the community in person? Okay, so if not, I'm going to move online. I have two online. Who was first? Senator Favela, you're up.
Yeah, hi. So um my my question is, um when you're talking about the defuelling and the so-called, you guys found um uh areas that was uh, you know, questionable. So let me share some light on you because you don't understand that the public knows more than you guys think. Yeah, because the people and the contractors that work there, yeah? So the bottom of that tank was always rotten. That's what it's called. Not not soft, rotten. Over the years, it deteriorated. And every time you guys defu and you guys refuel, you guys magnetize the arm bottom so that the rust would stay together so it doesn't leak. But the sides of the walls too, and they had the other leak that the guy accidentally, so-called, drilled into the wall, and they didn't know that the hole wasn't patched. That tank is too old, cement, the steel behind the wall, all deteriorating. It was deteriorating for years, so it's nothing new on the bottom of the rotten. Same like the roof. That's the reason why a fuel don't go to the top. Yeah, because when they did, when they did this, yeah, when they did this, then you had water. So the top of the capsule that looks like a pill, yeah, used to be all concentrated with water. That's the reason why the fuel was never to the top. So these are the things that you guys need to report going forward. And then, you know, it's, it's, go ahead, go ahead. Seems like you're anxious. Go ahead.
No, I was, I was going to mention, if you could get online, and if you check out the app, you can also see it on the app. We have video of the bottom of these tanks. And you can see where they're actually scraping up the sludge, and you can see solid metal, the men standing on the metal in the tanks. Uh there are no soft spots. There are no holes.
That's true. Do all the tanks, the ones that was repaired, doing what I was just talking about. Some of those tanks was repaired. So do them all. Be the people all in. We'll see. You know what I mean? I I just need you to be transparent, just like with this meeting that they have. You guys was all into the meeting, coming to the Red Hill meetings, and then all of a sudden, you guys stopped. Right? And you telling the board member to come to your, to your town hall or your home, whatever meeting? That's not acceptable. You guys are part of the issue. You guys need to show up at this community meeting. If you guys cannot, don't tell me you guys having a town hall meetings. If you guys cannot, don't tell me you guys having a town hall meetings and whatever. You tried to tell somebody to come to yours when you don't go to theirs?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Duna, if you can just make sure to, you can answer his question and I'm going to move on. Okay, thank you.
It's a great question. We'll take it back and we'll hope to have some answers for you, Vice Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Tara Rojas.
Okay, ah, Tara Rojas. So Navy, how is recuperating your public image going as part of, you know, your, your plan? So I just want to say, please, board and public, you know, do not be fooled. And just remember that any amount of basic minimum remediation, they need to be held accountable for it. And so I'm going to reiterate what Bernie Lau said, and I know I saw you Vic at the meeting, you know Vic, that Bernie Lau looked at the camera and he said, Navy, I know you're listening. Please just tell us what is in the water, so we know what we have to work with. It's been three years, we still don't know. We heard the back and forth between you all shifting blame or, you know, to the DOH or to the APA, back and forth, back and forth, and even to the BOW. The BOW is the only one standing up for us again. So I don't know how long it's going to take, how many neighborhood board meetings it's going to take for you all to pass it up, to have them tell the, the Board of Water what is in the fuel. And please adhere to the resolution that was just passed by City Council 24-216 regarding your testing, weekly testing, and you know, it's going to be done by a third party as well. Because just like the Marine, Navy, Army, just like the developers, the Seco Hoopitos, you know, it's, it's, it's just, you know, public image. That's all it's doing. You need to be held accountable.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Tara. I would, I would remind everybody that our testing is done by third party. It's all third party and it's under the guy, it's under the regulators. So we've, we've got the control system in place. Our water continues to be safe. We're testing bi-weekly with the 40, over 40 wells in the area of the Red Hill. And then again, with groundwater monitoring throughout the facility and the site. So we continue to have safe water, but we thank you for your questions.
Also, one more thing before we go, Chair. We have the test results with us, not only ours, but Board of Water Supply. And check it out. We'll be in the, in the back, so.
Okay.
Easy as that. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to 7D. Is the US Army here? Online? Army, okay, I'm going to skip to the next one. 7D, anyone here for Representative Ed Case? Nothing. Okay, I'm going to move on. For 7E, the representative for Mayor Blangiardi is not available. Out of state. So I'm going to move to 7F. This is for Councilmember Andrea Tupola, District One. Okay, nobody's on for Andrea.
I just wanted to say, hey, thank you for all our armed service guys coming out and giving us a report. I mean, you guys don't have to be here, but you know, thank you guys again, getting, keeping us informed on what's happening out, you know, here. Kanioei, on the water, Red Hill and all that. But thank you guys for coming out, staying with us and giving us the reports and taking the punches too. You too, Tony. Thank you very much.
Okay, the next one is Councilmember Agi Talba. He's not online.
Okay. Aloha, Vice Chair, Board Members. Aaron Michael Hall here, Community Liaison from the Office of Councilmember Agi Talba. Councilmember was at the Kapilina Beach Homes this evening for our community's policing or safety meeting. So I'm guessing that's where he still is. Earlier tonight, I distributed his, his Neighborhood Board Report to you and his extras on the back table. And as always, digital copies can be found on our website at agitoba H and L dot com. From the last meeting, Board Member Tananis had a couple of questions. The first being about Section Eight housing vouchers, more specifically about the city and county of Honolulu having, or continuing to pay for how the housing subsidy, when someone transfers out of state and whether or not that translates to less opportunities for local area residents looking for housing. So Section Eight, while it's administered locally by, by the city and county, it's actually funded primarily and apparently wholly by the, by HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development at the federal level. And so HUD appropriates money to local public housing authorities like DCS here in Honolulu. And the appropriations are based on housing demand, local cost of living, historical funding, which includes the need to cover all vouchers in the local inventory and possibly enabling new vouchers. So because it's federally funded, HUD requires that Section Eight vouchers be portable, meaning you can transfer them to other housing authorities in, in other counties or other states. However, there are specific procedures and conditions that need to be met in doing so. Then it is left to the discretion of the original housing authority and the receiving housing authority to negotiate which authority will fund the voucher moving forward. So unfortunately, you know, like some, some housing authorities are allocated more monies. Some, oh, locations are more expensive, so they kind of negotiate between them, like who pays for what. And then you had another question about the theft that's going on with the big, big lot stores and the shopping carts and whatnot. And our office is looking into some strategies to address the situation at the county level. This issue is more arguably suited for other levels of government, so we will be reaching out to those levels as well. But for the meantime, we are looking into what can be done. And I guess we'll let you know when we have more concrete details. And pending any questions, that's what I have.
Okay, questions from the board on the table? Line? Nope, from the community in person? Online? No, thank you, Aaron.
Thanks.
Okay, next is going to be 7H, Board of Water. Nothing online. Okay. Board of Water not here. Next one is going to be Department of Education. I'll let you, tell me yes or no on the line. Okay, nobody there. Next one is going to be 7J, Governor Green's representative. Okay, 7K, Department of Transportation. No? Okay, 7L. Senate 19, Senator Aquino. He is online.
Aloha, Chair, Board Members, Nathaniel Lee Say, Representative Senator Aquino. I'm sorry, I couldn't get my camera to work for some reason. But our office did send in our reports, I think sometime this afternoon. And with that, I stand by my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board members on the table? No, online? Community in person? Online? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
7M, Senate 20, Senator Favella.
Good evening. I'm not sure if you guys all got my digital copy of my, um, only updates. I just wanted to give a few highlights. Ever Beach Lions Club is going to be having their Easter Ba, I mean Halloween Ba, excuse me, on the 26th of October, five to whenever we finish at Ever Beach Shopping Center on the side of McDonald's. So it's called Tricat Truck, and if anybody have classic cars to notify me and let me know so that we can put your car in there. We're looking for the oldies, you know, 1950s and probably 60s, whatever, but old cars to do the Tricat Truck. And we're having weed and seed and they want to have Kiki ID and free food until it runs out. And then the next update is our Ever Beach Lions Club Christmas Parade. You guys, I'm going to be sending you guys all information about it, but I wanted to let the community know to pencil in the date, because it's going to be December 14th. December 14th, Christmas Parade will be the same route. And then looking online on the Lions Club to fill out your application. You don't have application on, online and don't come to the safety meeting. You're not allowed to be in the parade. So again, thank you guys for your guys' time and I hear for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board in person?
Senator Favella, thank you. Michael Plowman speaking. Just one quick question. DHHL representative mentioned a town hall?
Yeah. Which one, for, for the Iroquois Point? Yeah, that's what Town Hall Meeting is going to be next week, Tuesday. I, I'm not sure. I'll send it out to you guys, because we keep changing the, the day and the time is because we had a hard time having Iroquois Point Elementary to host the meeting. So that meeting is going to talk about traffic, the bus route into Iroquois Point and some of the issues that, not issues, but some of the concerns with Hawaiian homes possibly using the tsunami center area. So if it is not on Tuesday, it's going to be on Wednesday. So one of those two. I'll send it out to you, Board Members. You guys, was that, I got my, my flyer, so if you guys didn't get it, I apologize. But we had to make last minute changes, because it was hard penciling down the school for use, the facility, because that's the only place that we can use, we have enough room for the community and their concerns.
Thank you.
Senator? Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Sure. Just want to say thank you for what you do in our community, being our community aware of what's going on. Putting people on blast that needs to be on blast. We know that you wear your, your heart on your shoulder and how vocal you can be, but yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem. You know, this issue, gambling houses in our community, Banana Camp, Verona Village, 911029, 911025 has been a problem. That 25 has been a problem for a long time that we are jacing, working with now, who the new owner is Peter Savio. But we confronted the guys that was going to open a game room. We're not sure if they're going to take down any of the things. It's really bad, because you guys all know, Verona Village been going through some trials and tribulations and aches and pains. They're finally going to have an opportunity to buy their property. It's, it's the reason why we fought hard to stop the casino at Kamakana Lee in the back, because those ladies, the oldest one had just passed away this year. Yeah, she was about 99 years old. But these guys are up in their 80s and 70s. They don't need this kind of element in the community. And it was, it was just really frustrating and hurtful that people have so much disrespect because they want to make a fast buck. But thank you, Board Member Mitchell. Appreciate it.
One more to add. There was also a, I guess, a resident also had concerns about, if you heard, her name was Agnes. Not only the game rooms, the streetlights there, about the overgrown grass, the fire, the speeding, overgrown grass on the sidewalks, and also the homeless, I guess, the encampment by the Hongwoji and the furrow dogs, so.
That's, that's the homeless lady. It's not to say we're not sure how the fire started, but it looked like it came from that encampment. So now that her encampment is not there, she had relocated to the high school pad by the Hongwoji. And then the lights, we're working on the lights. I'm working with Peter Savio and his management team. I'm trying to pin down, DHHL keeps saying that they don't own the land, it would burn. But back when Michael Conde then was there, that was a swap of the land for the rail station. So it doesn't belong to the city. City not taking responsibility. And then Peter Savio's guys would bought up the house at the end that had all the homeless and the piles of rubbish, they cleaned it. They, they actually cut in a fire, fire break between the Hongwoji and Verona Village. So they're, they're slowly, the team getting together, but I'm working with that community resident and we're definitely going to work with Peter Savio, whatever he needs me to do. I'm going to help him as much as I can, because we are so blessed to have him develop the place and making it affordable for those families to finally own their own. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board Member online, nothing? Okay, any questions or comments from the community in person? Okay, online. Agnes. Hi, Agnes.
I just wanted to thank Senator Favella for taking quick action and coming to Verona Village. I do hope that, that dismantle, it really is, like you said, a safety issue for a lot of the elderly. And they don't, they don't need to deal with that. And I'm glad that there is a fire break. That's, there was actually a fire break prior to the fire that happened. There was a little bit of it, so that, that helped. But there is a corner area, and I had mentioned, it's probably because there's no lighting, only three of the 12 lights. So thank you for working with Savio to keep our community, to make our community safer. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And, and, and just to let you know, so I'll be out there tomorrow to be a visual, a visual to see if they're taking down the walls and the doors, the plywood, and if they didn't, I'm looking for volunteers. We're going to take it and then we're going to recycle all of that beautiful material. Then with the lights you're talking about, because now I'm going to see who has the easement in that area. If the easement also belongs to Peter Savio, I'll make sure that we, I write in my email and I'll call him personally to expedite the fixing of that, that lights that you're talking about. And then you can call me anytime. I'm pretty sure you have my number. If you don't, I'll give it to you.
Yes, I do have it.
Okay.
Have you programmed? So thank you. It's going to take you, but since you're here, I might as well say mahalo to you. And I'm, I don't know, but I definitely will tell the other residents to expect you there tomorrow. Thank you.
Be there.
Thank you, guys. Okay, so the next one up is 7N, Senator Gabbert, District 21, Senator Gabbert. Nothing, okay. 7O, Representative 30, sorry, District 39, Representative Perrick. Nothing. District 40, Representative Martinez. Nope. Uh, Repres, sorry, District 41, Representative Alcoz.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Thank you. Um, just a quick update on some of the things that we've been working on. Just this past, I think, what is today? On Friday or Thursday, I was working with Gentry out at Kamakana, Roosevelt, Roosevelt Road and Kamakana Lee, where that sewer plant is. They were requesting a traffic light in that area. So Debbie and her staff came out and we walked the, the district in, in that location. And, you know, they're still working on putting on that traffic light. It was going to put a red light, flashing red light there. And we're saying that's not good enough for flashing red light. But they wanted to put something temporarily. They're waiting on the city to get some permits. According to them, it takes years. I cannot understand why it takes that long, because the VA is already built. Some of the houses built with some other infrastructure in. So I'm ongoing with Debbie and Gentry to try get the safety lights out there and also working with the city. And there's about seven other location in the Ocean Point area that we're working on getting safety signs or speed bumps and some other stuff that we continue working on. Another meeting that I had at Oniula Beach Park was with John Mazuno from the state. He's Josh Green, Director for the Homeless. Talking to him, he was interested in putting up in homeless encampment or shelter or helping out these guys way at the back end and would be wanting to fund that project. The only problem is that we need the community as well as the city and county to agree to that. So that's one location. Ever since I was born, when I was going to that beach, there always was homeless. Until today, it's still homeless. So it's always going to be there. What do we do? You know, we do the sweep, we come right back. We tried everything. So I think there's some positive things that we can do to help these guys out and maybe transition them into a better life and get them off the streets. So that's something that Mazuno wanted to take care of and help with. So that's one of the things that we've been working on. And what else? The, right by Costco's, I was talking to Gentry. Seen that new traffic light that they have there, right by Costco's coming on? They, right now they building, Gentry is building 1,000 homes out there. The first phase is only about 300 something homes. That traffic light, they said it's not going to go on for another two more years. But then again, that's with the city, not Gentry. But then again, that's with the city, not Gentry. Once they turn over the roads in that area. But there's some traffic, there's some lights, street lights. They're going to open up that road probably within the next two months. Open up, there's two roads now, right in front, the houses and the VA area. So they're going to open up that side road in about two more months. And other than that, that's some of the updates that I had, if anybody have any questions within the area.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on the table?
Caulu. Caulu, eh? Oh, okay. So I think that's ECD A more, and then they turn them over to the city on the...
Yeah, they said about two more months that light is going to come on, and the road is going to open.
And then the, in the homeless with Mizuno encampment, that's in Haubush.
All about the bathrooms.
But a old bathroom.
Where, there's no plans and design yet. It was just a talk. They're willing to fund, it's coming out to the community and, and the city and county, and seeing if, if it's all right that we continue on doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Susan? Okay, hi, Susan.
Oh, yeah. Hi, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted a little more information about the, the people experiencing homelessness you were talking about. I'm assuming, is it the core or the care unit has approached these folks? The group of social workers, right, that come in and offer aid, and they have a mobile station now?
I believe they did many times. If they come in and want the help, I believe that a lot of them turned away from the help.
So. Got it. So these are long-term people experiencing homelessness, yeah?
Yeah, mostly long-term.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any?
Representative Alcoz, I know there was a dividing line for the, you know, the, I guess, the shelter side. I think from the, I think it was the Barber's Point, White Plains, this way to Ever Beaches, I think Waikiki Healthcare. And I think from White Plains going Ma- Makaha is like Yonai Camp or something. I don't know. I, I forget who's the, where, or who comes out now for, for that as well. But, but.
And the homeless side?
Yeah, the homeless. I mean, who comes out for help? What's your?
Oh, there's, there's, I'm not sure exactly. There's all kind of guys that come out and help. I forget that lady name that always there helping. I have them in my email. I have to look for them.
But the, but I just hope it's not going to be like the Honu that came down. You know, the one that they put the tents up, they try to help out. But what, what happened was, they brought, people would bring more.
So based on that, Mitch, I talked to John about that, too. It's more helping out the local people that is there, not the people that coming out from the mainland, probably do about fifty. Have the community to be in charge of the, of the facilities. At first, we probably work with the state police officer, city and county, to help with protecting the place. But try to make it more not like the Honu, because the Honu didn't work. One percent, two percent was the local people that came in, and the rest came in from the mainland. I think the people there needs to find a home and believe that they have a home, have self-confidence. We build them up, empower them, and then hopefully that we can move them out off of the drugs and back into another real home.
And lastly, the DLNR, if they can fix the gate in the back that goes out to Coles, because there's a lot of homeless run the beach, I mean, on the reef, that's all DLNR, so.
So once we get one place, that we can keep the local homeless people that we probably have about seventy-five, fifty, that we, we can take care of. We're not looking for invitation. You know, we got to be able to police our own community. The local people need to, and get involved with them.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public, uh, community? Online? Nothing? Thank you, Representative.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, for the last one is District forty-two, Representative Garcia. Okay, Section Eight. Does anybody have any committee reports, anything to report from any meetings they've had in the last, since the last meeting? Nope. Okay, nothing. Lastly, is nine, announcements. For nine A, the next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October tenth, at seven o'clock. And, okay, hold on. Virtually via WebEx and in person at the Ever Beach Public Library. And the regular board meetings are broadcasted every first Sunday at six, and every second and fourth Friday at ten o'clock on Olelo Digital Channel forty-nine. Okay, and then that's it. The next thing is ten. Adjourned? Just, adjourned? This meeting is adjourned? And that is nine sixteen. Thank you, guys, for coming.